Okay, it's 6:32, let's call the meeting to order. It's like everyone's here except for LeAnn, who is an alternate. And let me ask if anybody has a conflict of interest or feels biased, anything on the agenda for tonight?
When it comes down to voting on the minutes and also on the findings of fact, I was not at the 11th meeting, and I was not here at the findings of fact on Ruth Dublin. So I'd like to recuse myself from those two items.
Okay, acceptance of the agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Did the agenda be followed? All those in favor? Everyone's had time to read the minutes of the January 11th. I'll take a motion.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
I'm seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Tom's right. Five, zero, zero. I'm sorry, one abstained.
I recuse.
You recuse yourself. Okay, Tom, I think you also were in on the finding of facts for Mr. Dublin?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be signing the finding of facts for him also. Let me pass those two around. Ryan's Pass subdivision. All the abutters have been notified, and the fee has been paid. And the first thing I would like the board to do is review the preliminary plan checklist. Pardon? Sure. Do all the board members have copy of the checklist? Whether everything's been included or not?
George, I have a question. I don't know what it is for the checklist or not, but the driveway, the proposed driveway for the new lot that would be created is this driveway off of Spruce Knoll Lane. Is the driveway that would go to the existing house, was that a DOT approved driveway? It seemed like when we, years ago when we did this...
Do you remember offhand whether it was?
Yeah, Bruce might remember.
That was an existing one that was in there. You could say grandfathered or whatever.
So they can use that driveway on Route 1 without any further DOT?
The one that was over on the side, that was going to be where they had their parking.
For the business that they were going to run in there?
For the upholstery.
Okay, all right, so it has no... All right, so both driveways are still good then? All right, that's my only question.
[inaudible 00:39:59].
I'm sorry, I was asking concerning the driveways, if the, there's two driveways that went to that property and with the subdivision, one driveway would go with each property, and I was just questioning whether the driveway on Route 1 was still a legal driveway for the existing house that's there. Bruce seems to feel that it was. The second driveway was going to be used for the upholstery business that was at that house at one time. That was my only question.
That one was going to be for parking, as I recall.
For parking, yeah, okay.
Can I carry something else on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Darrell, you make reference in the deed to conditions that were put on this lot, number one. You make references, but you did not include any of those in here.
I referenced the...
I know you referenced it.
But we tried to read them in the law.
Well, I didn't know if that one had, I went back and looked at some, and I was going through it. I know they had things as what could or could not be done in the commercial area, on that commercial lot. And that lot was, you know, it was commercial, it was done before the zoning, so it's got there, but there were restrictions put on it. And I don't know if it said anything about the parking at that, in there. These were the ones in the reference. You referenced it there, the page in 231, number 18 or 13.
Yeah, it's on the first amendment. The conditions and restrictions for Lot 1, no newer use automobile sales businesses allowed. Number 2, no auto body or automobile sales businesses allowed. Number 3, no motorcycle, bicycle, full foot except for sale, retail businesses allowed. Number 4, no automobile sales or retail businesses allowed. Number 5, as long as stuff contains inside store businesses or office spaces will be allowed. Number 6, you have to park, and parking for Lot 1 is to be off Spruce Knoll Set and not off Route 1.
Okay, that's on there. You're getting that from the amended plan?
Correct.
We didn't have that information.
All right, that would come back to my question. How is he going to have parking for that lot for business use off of Spruce Knoll when none of his property will abut Spruce Knoll Lane any longer?
I think this was particularly addressed to the upholstery business, wasn't it? Site plan review on the upholstery.
Right, okay. So in other words, he would be able to, if somebody wanted to run a business on Lot 1, they would be able to have parking off of Route 1 and it wouldn't conflict with those restrictions since they no longer will have property on Spruce Knoll?
That's probably true, yeah. There's plenty of room for parking.
Okay, if it's, if they can have parking off Route 1, then I don't see any problem. But I remember those restrictions that were put on.
There used to be the little shell shop down there, the seashell.
Yeah, they tore that down, I remember that, yeah.
And then Baldacci bought it, and they had antiques.
Had antique shop in it.
They went up there, and I assume that if there's going to be a business, we had site plan review for the automotive upholstery business. I assume if there's something else going to be coming in, there'll be site plan review and parking would be addressed.
Okay, so these restrictions would not be applicable to, applicable to a new business application for Lot 1, correct?
They will.
They will be, except for the parking, which obviously can't be.
Okay, all right. We probably should note somewhere that those restrictions would still apply except for the parking, which cannot be...
It's noted that in the deed.
Yeah, it's in the deed itself.
Okay.
That's fine.
It's just they were not enumerated. Thank you, Neil.
See, I had some questions about the submissions for the preliminary plan. The first one was the test pits, which we, you've taken care of already. And a letter from the water department, which you gave us tonight, I believe.
We used to require that they had the design, remember, before? He enumerates it, but he doesn't show where it's going, where it's going to be raised.
Right, it's not in the new subdivision now. Because we took the checklist right from the subdivision. So I take it then that the preliminary plan checklist is complete? And I would need a motion to that effect?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the preliminary plan is complete. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, the next thing is, we have to decide if you, if the board wants to hold a public hearing for this subdivision. So I'll need a motion, one way or the other.
We're not required?
I move we hold a public hearing.
That's a good idea.
Okay, seconded?
Yep. I'll second.
All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, I'll get the notice out to the abutters that we're going to hold a public hearing, and it'll be in the paper.
I have a question, Darrell, on this back...
Dorothy, you were given the opportunity with the abutters' letter to come in and review our copy of this subdivision. No one showed up to review that.
That's incorrect, there's some other issues, it's no spot on the way.
Well, that was two weeks ago, you were sent that notice. So anytime you want to come in, it's public documents, you can review the subdivision.
How can you change the zoning requirement for the subdivision? It has been, the lot, residential only, commercial usage are prohibited. Has the legislation documented?
That's not a copy of what we have registered.
Well, it's not the business, what applies with the county, it's got the date of construction that...
What book and lot and page number is that?
What?
What book and page number is that?
The plan, the original plan has been amended once, and that's compared with the commercial one.
I don't overremember that.
Yes, it's a copy.
If you didn't understand it, you explained it.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
That might clarify this. I thought there was an exemption for Lot 1 for limited commercial use, and if Lot 1A is subdivided off it, it seems to me that that would restrict the result, no, no commercial use would be allowed in Lot 1A. So the commercial area would actually be smaller than it was before.
Well, we'll discuss that. I don't think that's correct. It's a division of that initial lot.
So the commercial use would be allowed to spread over into the new divided lot?
That's right, yeah.
All right, that's...
It's the same, it's the same physical lot.
The same conditions apply to 1A that apply to 1?
To 1.
Okay, I misunderstood, Dan.
Am I correct, Mr. In? Darrell, am I correct on that?
Yes.
The same conditions apply to 1A that apply to 1?
Yes. It needs to...
Yep. Well, and what can be done there, what cannot be done there?
Yes, it's always in on that first amendment.
I have a question that probably should be directed to Sonia Vasquez. Why does she want to divide that lot in that manner that if you have something behind it, residential or commercial, it is right in her backyard, you know, looking into the back of her house? And I think I know ahead of time she probably wants to use it herself, but we don't all live forever. Someone else is going to be there, whether it's a residence and some kids, or a commercial one, and the other one. It just seems a strange way to divide it. You know, it gets the acreage, it does it, it fits, and subdivision probably do it for someone who wants to live there. I wouldn't want to live in the existing one with someone behind it, and I don't want to live behind it with a great big house in front of it.
That's her decision, and that's just how it came up with the division of 1A because...
Yeah, I see. That's what I said, I guess she could...
She might keep that, you know, the Lot 1A just for sentimental purposes, but this guy, she can't allow it.
But eventually...
I own the lot directly behind the lot, she just... Now, you're saying she might do it for sentimental purposes, but that means she's not going to build a free hand on it.
Excuse me, excuse me, you'll have your chance in the public hearing, okay? We're finished here for tonight until we schedule a public hearing, which will be in the paper, and the abutters will get a copy of it. Thank you.
Subdivision, this is pretty clear, isn't it?
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I don't have a report tonight, I'll have one next week for you.
Okay, Randy, thank you.
Go ahead, keep it, Tom.
The next item is suggested site plan review, ordinance changes presented by Mr. Kessler. The board should have copies of what he had suggested, and the board should also have copies of a letter from our attorney with regard to that. If you haven't, if the board hasn't already looked at it, I'll give you a couple of minutes I think to summarize it, Mr. Kessler suggested that we publish a notice to abutters 10 to 15 days, business days, prior, and in a second paper. And it be posted to places. And notify the abutters at the same time we notify the paper. And it contained the physical and tax map and a summary of what was to be done. And then lastly, a statement by the board that the final application, if it's complete, And we had already voted to limit it to seven days, not business days, but seven days prior to, so that was already voted upon and approved by the board.
Want to talk more about it?
Pardon? Well, do you want to talk more about it now, or do you want to talk more about it after a motion? Want to talk more about it now?
No, I have a motion.
We can talk more about it now.
You want to hear from Ted Kessel?
We've already heard from Ted. This is a board decision.
Okay.
It's not a public. As I pointed out, we've already made a motion and approved it for seven days. His recommendation is 15 business days or 10 business days. This would put us back by the time you advertise it to about three to four weeks. And it would also cost the applicant more money. It's also, he would suggest in a second paper. Second paper, the only other paper we can advertise it in is the Bangor Daily News. That would add an additional $300 to $600 to the applicant to advertise in that paper. I don't think it's necessary. I think the seven days is fine. We've had no problem to pass with that. I've tried something new. People tell me that, some people tell me that putting it in the paper is antiquated, and it's only a matter of time before the state changes air rolling. And you saw from the attorney that the town meeting is only advertised for seven days I've tried putting it on the town's website and the town's Facebook page.
Mr. Chairman, what about an alternative to, we put it into one, the local paper. I just don't see putting it in the Bangor Daily News that that costs to the applicant. What about putting it on the town TV channel?
It's always on the town TV channel.
The actual notice of the.
The notice, well, no, the town, the planning board meeting notice.
Oh, I know that, but I'm.
If you go to the town website, it's right on there.
Okay.
We only have an app, a viewing public of about 600 town residents.
I realize that.
Or actually buildings or homes in the town. So in putting it on the town website, we get a lot more coverage. The other thing is, I started to tell you that I'm putting it on the Facebook page. We had 345 hits the last time I put it on the Facebook page.
Oh, I think that's a good idea, I'm moving my advertising to Facebook page. I just thought not to not to not put it on the website, but to also put a separate notice for each applicant on the TV channel. But you know better than me whether that's feasible or not.
Well, it's feasible, it would take three or four different slides because it's limited to about 20 words per slide. We can put.
Well, not the whole text, I mean, just the notice of the.
Well, it should be, yeah, but there's a format for sending the notices out. And the format does list the lot number, a brief description, and Bruce will go with this. And this is what he did, the lot number, a brief description of what's being done, the physical address, and the person causing this application. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we do not adopt the changes suggested by Mr. Kessler. And we thank him for the thought that he put into it and consideration on that. And they're there, I think we can handle it the way we've been doing quite well. I'd say more when it comes to discussion, if anyone seconds it. That we do not adopt those changes, that's my motion. We're putting that. With thanks for the work, the thought that you put into it.
Okay, on the question, I'm sorry, it's been a motion and it's been seconded. Keith, you seconded it, okay, it's been moved and seconded. On the question now. I think Mr. Kaiser. I think Mr. Kessler had some good points in there. One of them being to actually put in the ordinance that the applicant's name, the development address, and summary of the applicant's request. I also think it was a good thing to have in there that the planning board shall also post this notice in the town office and the post office. Which we had been doing, which you had been doing, at least seven days prior to the hearing. And I think we should put in there that the planning board shall have the same notice sent to the abutters that appears in the paper at least seven days prior to the hearing. Let me pass this out, I kind of put this together, and you'll see it in green ink.
Putting it in the town office and the post office is good, and that had been done, and the same notice went out at the same time.
Right.
And usually what down, what goes in there as to what's being done is essentially the same thing that we get on the application. What are you planning to do, and that has gone in word for word. We have the physical address, map and lot number, and then exactly what they put in, what they plan to do. And we don't get into more of that until we have the site plan meeting or hearing.
Right.
But having that out, everything at least a week ahead of time. The news is, you're down, we're trying to get it out by Thursday or Friday, posted. And the mail went out at the same time, so that everyone should have it that Monday. And the town office takes care of the timeframe. And not, don't need to get the two papers ahead of time for the public hearing. Let the, we'll tweak it. You got another copy of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought. I think what you see.
And you should, you should be able to take care of some of those on your own, George, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Just do it.
What we had in blue ink on here is what we agreed to previously and voted on. What I've added in green ink is, I think, some important facts that Mr. Kessler has brought up in his request to us. It puts no more burden on the applicant at all, and it actually spells out the time that these notices should go out.
George, I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, sure, Tom.
I think your changes are appropriate, I think the 14 days is way too long. I think more notice is better than less, though, so there's a compromise in there somewhere that we need to reach. I'm, I think we ought to have, given the fact you mentioned that people are mostly into electronic media these days, or many of, many people are, Keith excluded. The, but, but that's the trend, and we, I think we ought to, because it costs no money, to have it on Facebook and on the town website. Obviously, that, I think, makes a lot of sense. I guess the only thing I have that I, that's an easy add-on, but the, one thing that concerns me is the failure of mail service to not notify abutters. Makes me uncomfortable. If we, if the abutter is not notified, and we've had that circumstance before, I'm not sure if there's a fail-safe there short of certified mail. Did we ever do that, or, or no, or?
Certified on subdivision, but on regular mail, if the address is incorrect, Debbie, you come in, those get returned to the town office, correct?
Yeah, those addresses.
Or they can't find them.
Yeah, the addresses come from the tax records, so they're pretty.
But I guess the intent here is that, and it's a circumstance of, the mail service is fairly reliable. Whether it gets to the person in time is not necessarily the town's responsibility. But longer time notice, either abutters are going to speak to each other, say, hey, do you know this is happening? I think gives us a little bit more comfort zone and transparency. But I, I think 10 days, 10 business days, or something like that is, as long as we can make it without being an incredible burden on either the applicant or the town, I think makes some sense.
10 business days to notify the paper takes three weeks.
Can we, but maybe, maybe we qualify this, maybe we have a certain deadline or amount of time for print media, and we say, okay, we'll do some longer extended period in electronic media, which can go up the day the application comes in, pretty. Filing that on you, but within a more, there'd be a longer period of time electronically.
That's what's happening now, I'd rather not put that out yet, because Randy has to approve the application before it comes to us.
Okay.
And that may be depending on, well, we'd need a public hearing. And the public hearings go out three weeks so that we can get them in the paper. We do it more than that, and you're sending it back an entire month before you can see something, so.
So we have the, between the original application and the public hearing, we have a prolonged, a longer period of time if there's a public hearing?
Right. Yeah, and there's a public hearing for every site plan, so, yeah.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is, I'd like to ask Debbie, is there a lot of these coming back to the town offices non-deliverable, by the postal service?
I get them, to be honest with you, and the answer to that is no.
No, I didn't think so, you know, I, I mean, if the postal service gets a good address, they probably deliver it, if they don't.
That's correct.
It comes back, so, you know, I don't think it's a major problem.
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion on the floor right now. Would you want to amend that motion to include what I've put in here? Or in, in green?
How much of what would be in green? You're a colorblind guy.
I forgot you're colorblind. Okay.
The public development.
We're saying that the applicant's name, development address, and summary of the applicant's request. The planning board shall also post this notice in the town office and the Searsport Post Office at least seven days prior to the hearing. The planning board shall have at least, right, the same notice sent to the abutters by regular mail.
You can put that in, you can, you can, we used to do it, and you can do it yourself.
Right.
You put it in, it's nothing, you can change it, puts it down there.
So you want to.
Seven days, you're amended.
Amended to that?
To the green.
Okay. All those in favor? I'm sorry. Sorry.
Did we make an amendment?
That the green stuff is included.
We're going with the green, right?
Right.
Add an agreeing, okay.
The blue and a green, actually.
Blue and a green, all right.
All those in favor of that? Okay. Let's move on to the suggestions that Ann Cromada had made. You should all have a copy of her suggestions. You should all have a copy of the attorney's suggestion. And I don't know whether I had given you an email that Ann had sent to me saying that the alternative language that Ed suggests would, would address her concerns. Okay, James was trying to get Ed to come tonight, I guess it didn't materialize. He lists as number four in his letter that he would need to have the opportunity to discuss this with the planning board before putting it forward as a possible adoption to, by the town. There are some questions that I would like to ask Ed about what he suggested before we actually put this in the ordinance.
What's our drop dead date on this?
Tonight.
Tonight, something I was afraid of.
What were some of the questions you wanted to ask?
Some of the questions were, is there a period of time that this is going to be held? What he's suggesting probably would have nothing to do with the planning board, more to do with the code enforcement officer. It would be up to the code enforcement, this code enforcement officer to go out and, and check this complaint out and possibly put some penalty on it, a monetary penalty. But would have nothing to do with the planning board. And again, one of the questions I had was, is there a time limit to this? What about vested interest? Actually, you brought up vested interest in that last session we had.
And who determines if it was deliberate misrepresentation?
Right.
Who's the one that makes that, is that done in a court?
Or by the code enforcement officer.
They're deliberate.
Yeah, I think that should be spelled out. So with that being said, I take a motion. I'll make a motion that we not include this at this time in the ordinance, and that we proceed to contact the attorney and follow this through in this coming year.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, is there a question?
Well, I, I, I really like the idea of this, but I'm reluctant now with this, you know, precaution. But I guess I'm reluctant to hold that, because I don't see how the town can.
I'd like to see that pad on the time limit, Dylan.
I agree with your concerns. I generally like the tone of what Ed Bearer suggested, but I think it needs more detail. I don't want to let it die right now. Can we realistically continue it and, I don't know, do it a special town meeting or something?
No, I don't think so.
So we got to wait till next year to adopt it?
That's correct.
That's why I'm reluctant about it, but I don't see any, we have any other choice.
As I say, I like the tone of it, but the details, the devil is in the details, in my opinion.
I don't want to put the town in jeopardy.
Yeah, I see lots of lawsuits.
Okay, I agree with you 100%, yeah. Okay, all those.
Would this continue to be a business item for us, we can't continue? Because I'd like to see this pursued further, I think we can come up with some kind of a meeting of the minds.
Yeah, I think we can beat this out.
There's no question about it, that was part of the motion, that we continue this.
Continue, get Ed Bearer on it.
All those in favor?
Now, the motion is.
That we not put this into the ordinance, but continue to.
Yes.
Continue with it.
You vote Keith?
You voted for, okay, 5-0-0. Right. Okay, I also need a motion to send to the selectmen a notice stating that the planning board approved the attached changes to the subdivision, shoreline zoning, site plan, land use, and the ordinance to establish and organize and administer of the planning board for the, for the Searsport Annual Town Meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay, next on the agenda is a letter from Mr. Kaiser in reference to the subdivision, the Silverleaf subdivision. First of all, I'd like to motion to reconsider the action of January 11th to issue a certificate of expiration on the Silverleaf subdivision.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have that letter either.
Do you have a copy of it? There's a copy of the letter, I'll give you a couple of minutes to look at it.
You don't have another copy, do you?
I think in that letter.
Thank you.
You'll see that Mr. Kaiser references the, the. I think in that letter you'll see that Mr. Kaiser references the slow retail market at that time, which is a good point. And I have here also a copy of Hallie's advertising it. I'll pass that around. It's a 44-acre parcel that I believe to paraphrase it, he's selling the lots, the entire subdivision. So he's trying to market it both ways, which I have to applaud him for doing that in this tight market. Did we get a vote on the reconsider?
Motion to re-.
No, to reconsider. Should have been a motion to reconsider the action of January 11th to issue, which was to issue a certificate of expiration.
I'll second the motion to reconsider the actions of January 11th.
Is there a second on that?
I made a second.
Second it? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, I'd make a motion to rescind that order to issue and file that certificate of expiration.
Well, okay, so we can discuss it now?
Yeah.
So what he's saying basically is, you know, like the federal government, he's got a perpetual approval that he can take 150 years, 300 years, if he likes, and I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, that's debate on whether he can or cannot. There's, the ordinance in place when it was decided does not restrict how long it takes, okay? The ordinance we have in place now does. And there's case law out there saying that we can impose the new ordinance, but that would have to go to court before that would happen. So in talking to Mr. Kaiser, he is, he's well aware that before the lots are closed on, that road has to be constructed to town specifications. That's not a problem. There has been some rumors that that particular area wants to be changed to industrial, which is close proximity to an industrial area. To do that, he couldn't sell it as a subdivision, and he could try and sell it, but it wouldn't happen. I'm sure you wouldn't want to buy it in an industrial area, a lot. So that's, he's quite aware of everything, and he's made an effort to sell the subdivision. That's why I put this forward.
I appreciate his effort to sell it. Now, what do we get in return for rescinding our order?
It's a good question.
Do we give another three years on the five years?
Well, we can still, at any time down the road, send another letter out.
And say we'll go in the court?
Yeah. But it would cost the town money, obviously.
Can I make a motion that we give him a one-year at a time extension on the subdivision?
I don't think that would be legal, no.
That doesn't encompass very much.
No.
I don't know, the market's going to change that much, so you just go on. Right now, we have no, how do I say, guarantee of financial capacity or capability on this, right?
No, we have the original guarantee, yeah.
It's not the financial one?
No.
No. So there's no money involved. Inflation or something like that, let's say you're going to put a road in for $100,000 and you do it 20 years from now, the road costs $2 million.
He was to come before us.
Well, he comes now, he has to put that road in for his own lot. That's the whole thing.
Before it's closed on.
That takes care of that.
Right.
And there's not a financial, there's not a number associated with it. It's not going to be subject to inflation or anything. We put a lot of time and effort into this subdivision to get it through with DEP and with other people there. It's, they're down there, the waterfront was going to be a high-end one, a tax base. I'd like to see it go through. I don't think we want to try and do away with it or take it off the books, let it on there for a while. And he goes, he's got the thing in that, the town's not on the hook for any money right now.
Not at this time.
We're not exposed.
He can't, he has to put the road in before he sells the first lot, right? Or does he get to sell some lots before putting the road in?
No, before it closes on the first lot.
Before he closes on the first lot, he has to put the road in, so...
It'd be nice to see something happen down there, but to come down and sell the first lot or sell the whole thing. He's gone through a lot of work, I don't see throwing it out. We've got other subdivisions that aren't selling.
Yeah, so we won't get burned.
And we just approved one earlier, then I guess the guy's not going to go through with it.
Right.
So, not a hot market for subdivisions, in Searsport, anyway.
And the other thing, he does understand also that if it is sold as a complete subdivision, whoever purchases that subdivision will have to come before us for guarantee. Okay?
Now, let me be a little bit of a devil's advocate here. Is he better off just holding on to the land, hoping in hell he'll get changed to industrial because he can sell it for more as an industrial piece of property than as a subdivision?
I don't know that he will. Who knows?
Who knows what the market is?
We have a past history on some of that. Bill Treat had a subdivision down there by Moose Point State Park. It's a three-lot subdivision between Moose Point and the counterpractives. And that was done about 25 years ago. And he called one day and wanted to de-subdivide because he thought it was affecting his taxes. But that's been on the books for a long time.
Likewise, the subdivision on Bounty Farm Road.
Yeah.
Has been on the books for a while and hasn't sold.
Millianal subdivision, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's move the question forward then.
Well, when would we, without making it part of the motion, like, when would we discuss this again, you know? Two years, three years?
Well, the board can bring it up whenever they want.
Anytime?
Yeah. But again, I say to you, it would end up in the courts.
Yeah. Basically, that's it, if we bring it up again, it's basically a notice to him that we're going to court.
Right. Okay? All those in favor of the motion?
A motion is to...
Would you repeat the motion?
The motion is to rescind the order to issue and file a certificate of expiration.
Thank you.
You got a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. You're welcome.
Sell some lots, right?
Yeah, please.
Well, we had originally, we were told by the real estate people, don't even list it because, at this point, because we're in the worst recession in history since 1933. So at their insistence, I did not do that. However, recently, it is now, although signs not up and it's been placed with...
Sufi?
Sudleys. And it's listed on the market. So we're now actively going to pursue that more than we have been in fact. But that's the only reason that it hasn't done that. And I'm sure you know from other subdivisions that you had, it hasn't been a stellar market over the last, since the time that we got the subdivision approved. So the other, the other thing that I would just bring to your attention is that when I got the notice that it was going to be going to the board, which, and it was indeed had gone to the board, I got home three days from a vacation that I had on Phoenix to see my family, three days after the board meeting. So I never received the letter until after it had already gone with the board meeting. In looking at that, you might want to look at visiting if something like that goes out to somebody that you did a signature for or something, so that you know that the person at least receives it. It's not a huge expense to do that, but it might clear up a lot of this because I would have been here way sooner to address this problem in a prompt manner. And in the future, it might be a good idea just for other people that might learn the same thing that I learned. So just a thought.
Yeah, we would have sent Mr. Kaiser a copy also, but we didn't know that he also, or still represented you. You were on the tax rolls, and that's why you, you and you alone got the letter.
I didn't get a registered letter or anything for it, so consequently, just through a mix-up of being on vacation during the process, I never got the letter until after the meeting had already occurred.
That's a good point.
Thank you very much for considering it.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along, open to the public. Ann, hold on, Ann, turn that mic on, it looks like it's off.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann Cromato, Searsport. As it stands right now, if an applicant misleads the planning board, there's nothing that the planning board can do because the ordinance does not address such an eventuality. So when I learned that, I thought I would take a stab. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't even play one on TV, but I said, I'll take a stab at writing something up. And the town wisely consulted an attorney to get the proper language. Ed Baer does address some of the questions, obviously the vested interest question, and that would be addressed by a due process, that there would be a hearing, that the applicant would have an opportunity to defend or to explain. The town, rather than nullifying a permit, which is what I had originally suggested, Ed suggests, which is probably better, that there would be consequences in the form of possible prosecution. So you're not nullifying a permit, so that doesn't hurt if someone, I understand there's a danger of someone not getting funding if there's a possibility that their permit could be voided. I understand that. But, but to put someone on notice, it put everyone on notice. They read our ordinance and they see that if they willfully mislead the town, that there can be consequences. Whatever those consequences would be, would be up to you guys. Now, whatever questions you might have for the attorney, you know, he sent this letter almost two weeks ago, which I thought would have been enough time to ask him, I don't think you have a lot of questions, just a couple of questions. And I'm disappointed that this will have to wait for another year. Because if it happens that someone gives you false information, and again, it should be deliberately, not accidentally, I was mistaken in putting that because people can make mistakes. But even then, it would still be up to you. It would be up to the planning board. And if, if someone misled you accidentally, then you would have the opportunity to say it was a mistake, it wasn't deliberate, okay, no big deal. Or sometimes you might be given information that turns out to be incorrect, but doesn't really have a lot of impact. Again, you have the option of saying, okay, we're not going to do anything about that. It's just that it would give you more control. And I just feel like that's something that is important, that you have the control. That's all. And if I can make one comment about Mr. Kessler's proposition, I think that it's mostly important that the applicant, not the, I'm sorry, that the abutters have more time, not necessarily the general public. Seven days is probably enough. Not everybody has cable, so the town website and, and, you know, the TV aren't accessible to everyone. However, the seven days is fine in most cases. But I think abutters do need a little more time. If it's something that really affects them, by the time they figure out what it is and what they should do about it, seven days goes very quickly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Mr. Chairman, I think I mentioned this a long time ago, but it's, I know it's too late now because this is the last night, but I know, I've been in some towns where if you're going to put an application in to do something on a piece of property, the town has a sign thing made up, and you have to put the lot and subdivision on it and information, to post that on the property for the seven days or whatever, which gives anybody going past it a chance to see it. So I, that could be a possibility for, to do something like that in the future, you know, for next year's town meeting, and some type of proposal where a sign would be posted in front of a piece of property that's up for subdivision or that there was going to be a public hearing on.
You're talking about site plan review?
Yes.
Something like a notice of intent to harvest, if you put on a tree or you're going to cut wood.
Yeah, well, so they have these, I've seen these big signs in other towns, you know, proposal for this piece of property, site plan review, date, hearing to be held at town meeting, town office or whatever. That way, anybody that goes by it can see it.
Some have a great big lighted board up there, too, like Clifton.
Well, I'm not proposing that, but I'm, you know, I'm thinking of a standardized cardboard sign that I've seen used in other towns.
Thanks, Mark.
It's a possibility.
Thank you. Anyone else from the general public? Sorry?
Ted Kessler, Searsport. When I listened to your discussion of the suggested changes I made, I heard discussion of your procedure. I heard discussion of inconvenience to the applicant. But I didn't hear anything about the purpose of my suggested revision. And that is the reality of and benefit to someone who wishes to be informed about what might take place as an abutter and to be allowed the time to do the homework necessary, to review the application, if necessary, to contact an attorney, which is becoming more and more common, as I have observed this board for the last 13 years. And I think you missed an opportunity to extend some respect, some courtesy, and basically to allow the abutters to live in a world of reality where they might need the time to do what's necessary to inform themselves about any change that might reflect their investment in this community. Your own ordinances say that if something, if you feel that a development, someone that's planning something next to you will affect your property values, it falls upon you as the abutter to prove it. That means you have to go out and get an assessment from a qualified source, and I would challenge any one of you to do that in seven days, or maybe five days by the time you figure out what's going on. The same is true of finding an attorney, if you need one. To have a responsible interaction with your attorney, to review the application, and to come before this board informed is nearly impossible in seven days. And further, the applicant himself, I've heard people on your board say that the burden of proof is on the applicant. But the app... of proof is on the applicant, but the applicant has plenty of time to deal with you, to prepare their plans, to consult their attorneys, their experts, their engineers, their contractors, whatever it takes for them to come before this board and get approval. I don't see that same extended courtesy to residents of this town, the small business owners in this town, to protect their investment or to inform themselves, basically just inform themselves of what might happen. So I think your insistence on seven days is ill-formed. And I think also, the attorney who reviewed this application for this change, there is no established law that says it has to be one way or the other. It's totally up to you. He has said that some towns say at least seven days, some places say at least 14 days. That would have been better than what you have suggested. I mean, I thank you for the things about the posting and all the rest of it, but I think you missed an opportunity to demonstrate to this community and to the residents who at last time I checked pay the overwhelming majority of the property taxes that keep this co- town going. And I think it's probably too late for you to reconsider, since you've had your vote, but that's the way I feel, and I think there are plenty of others in this town that share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Economy, I think you...
Just a quick comment before I go into what I came here to address. Six months ago, I contacted Ed Behr relative to the situation my wife and I have relative to Main Materials putting in a salt facility across the street. Mr. Behr told me that he could not represent us because either he or his firm represented Main Materials, one of the clients of, one of the owners of Main Materials, and that I would have to, so I, I actually wound up consulting another attorney. I find it interesting that he did not, you know, say to you that he had a conflict of interest in this case because he was representing a client that, or his firm was representing a client, that had an issue relative to the same issue. I find it very interesting that he was, you know, willing to give you advice on this, when he wouldn't represent us. Anyway, this is an issue with Main Materials that I've been addressing with this Board of Selectmen and with the planning board for over six months now. It only came to our attention in late June because you approved their application in January and they did not begin operations until the end of June, and no one knew what was going to be happening. So anyway, last October, I came before the planning board to request that Main Materials be required to apply for a permit modification based on the facts that they had misrepresented their hours of operation, their planned operation, their noise, the noise levels produced by their operations, and the use of lighting at the facility. I was directed to submit my request in writing to the code enforcement officer, Randy Hall, and that the planning board would review my request with their attorney. Last month, when I requested an update on this matter from the planning board, I was told to meet privately with Mr. Hall regarding this matter. When I met with Mr. Hall, it was the, I think the last week of January, I was told that he had sent Main Municipal Attorney Richard Fuehwellen a package of information regarding Main Materials' application. Mr. Hall showed me this package that he said he had forwarded to Mr. Fuehwellen, it was about that thick, and following Mr. Fuehwellen's review of this material, Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall said he had received an email from Fuehwellen in which Fuehwellen said that there were only two reasons the board could revoke approval. One was that it had been granted by, granted without legal authority, or two, that it was granted on the basis of false information provided by the applicant and that was material to the decision. Mr. Hall read me portions of this email. He said he was not allowed to let me see the email or read the email myself because of some reason of confidentiality, I guess. Mr. Hall reported that Mr. Fuehwellen's review determined that the planning board did not have a basis for revoking their approval of Main Materials' permit. I then requested to review the package of information that Mr. Hall said that he had sent to Mr. Fuehwellen, and on my reviewing that package, I found that the package did not contain Main Materials' DEP application, nor did the letter DEP had sent to Main Materials following their eight, 10, 15 inspection, in which they notified Main Materials that their current operations differed from their original proposal, which had been approved by them, and that Main Materials would need to apply for a permit to modify, for a permit modification prior to receiving any other salt deliveries, which required them to work at hours outside 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Main Materials was also required to provide DEP with materials demonstrated, that demonstrated their proposed operation would be in compliance with DEP's noise rule. I provided Mr. Hall with these documents and requested that he forward them to Mr. Fuehwellen for his review, and he agreed to do that. Main Materials' DEP application is the document where they state that they were not proposing nighttime operations except in severe emergency situations where salt deliveries were needed due to severe weather conditions, and that the only lighting at their facility would be one downcast light at the office or weighing station. Main Materials' presentation at their January 12, 2015 public hearing followed the information that was contained in their DEP application, almost, you know, section by section. And they, in, at no time during that presentation did they say that they would be unloading a salt ship during 24 hours, 24/7 hours, going through the night at all. All they said was that they did not plan any nighttime activities other than during a severe emergency where salt deliveries were needed during severe winter weather. That was all they said. Following a meeting with Mr. Hall, I called, you know, the Main Municipal Association and requested to talk with Mr. Fuehwellen. However, I was told that I could not speak with him because he could only speak with municipal offices. So then I contacted one of our selectmen and asked that they contact Mr. Fuehwellen relative to his opinion regarding Main Materials' application approval by the planning board. When this selectman contacted Mr. Fuehwellen and asked him about his review of the package of information that Mr. Hall had sent him regarding Main Materials' application and the two documents that I had given Mr. Hall to be forwarded to him, he indicated that he had never received any packets with information from Mr. Hall. He hadn't received the two additional documents that I had given to Mr. Hall for him to be forwarded to. He reported that he had only received a brief email from Mr. Hall outlining this matter, and his opinion that he had given to the town was based only on the information Mr. Hall had provided him in that email. As I feel it is clear that Main Materials did provide false information during their application process, when they applied for a permit, I'm requesting that the planning board, as I requested several months ago, that you require that Main Materials, not, not to revoke their permit, but to require that they apply for a modification of their permit to address this, these issues that haven't been addressed. Abutters and neighbors had no opportunity to address these issues relative to 24/7 operations, the noise levels, and the lighting issues because they were never raised or addressed to the planning board during the public hearing at all. If you won't agree to do this, then I request that you send Mr. Fuehwellen and Main Municipal Association a complete copy of all the materials relative to this matter, including a copy of the video of the January 12, 2015 planning board meeting and public hearing, and information regarding DEP's decision where they did find that Main Materials' operations were different from what they had proposed in their initial application, something that you have refused to consider or address. But I'm asking that you send all that information to Mr. Fuehwellen so that he can review the full record, not just a brief email, and make an informed decision relative to whether just that his decision is based on a full review of the facts, not just a brief email. I have a copy of my October 20th letter that I, after being directed by you to put this in writing to Mr. Hall, my request for, for them to be, Main Materials be required to resubmit, to modify their application, and I've got copies of my issues and concerns that I'm raising tonight, if you'd like to have them. Or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to questions.
I would suggest you give everything to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall's handling it with an attorney.
Mr. Hall's handling it with what attorney?
Pardon?
Which attorney is Mr. Hall handling this with?
That's between Mr. Hall and whoever. We don't get involved with that. Mr. Hall does all that.
Well, when I was here in October, you said that I had to put it in writing to Mr. Hall and that the planning board would be consulting their attorney.
Mr. Hall's taking care of that.
Well, from this, and from what information I've received from our selectmen regarding what Mr. Fuehwellen received from Mr. Hall, I have a great deal of concern about how this is being followed up on.
Well, you'll have to take that with Mr. Hall. Take that up with Mr. Hall, not the planning board.
I don't know. You've already got a copy of my letter, Randy.
Anyone else from the public?
Meredith Ayers from Nora Street in Searsport. It is unfair when people have serious concerns to direct them to somebody who doesn't do what he says he's done. I have copies of the correspondence between the town of Searsport, Mr. Hall, and Mr. Fuehwellen, and it, it doesn't do any good to direct people to take something to someone who is so overworked that he is not able to do this, to do this job. I would, I've made some copies of this correspondence. I would like to give it to each member of the, of the board. And tell, tell citizens where they go, if not to come back to the planning board, where they go if the people that they've been directed to don't do what they, they're supposed It was reported back to the town and to the economies that Mr. Fuehwellen had given a, given an opinion, but the, he said in, when he, when he replied to me that the opinion that he gave in his December 15th email was based solely on Randy's December 14th email describing the circumstances, and that email did not describe the circumstances. It omitted the, the very relevant information. And how, how are citizens supposed to, to find any, any redress if the, if the officers of the town are not responsive to them?
Harlan, I believe you had your hand up.
My name is Harlan McGlawn, and I live up back a little bit. Uh, wait, hold on. Forgot my prop. I just, I just read on this, on your agenda, the bottom line, I, I would imagine that's what we used to call a mission statement. Is that what that is? It says balancing new development against the traditional character and quality of life of the community by promoting and implementing the town ordinances. That's pretty much the mission statement of the planning board, I, I would guess. As I'm reading that, I'm thinking, well, how do you balance the two and, and how do you find out about people feel about the traditional character and quality of life of the community unless you let them come and talk to you? And I would think that would be a really important part of your job. And then I thought, well, you do have an open to the public, and that's wonderful, and I think having at the end of the meeting is a very good idea because it gives the people a chance to discuss anything that came up during the meeting, so nothing falls through the cracks. However, there are a lot of times when a lot of people want to come and talk to the planning board about things that they feel are affecting the traditional character and quality of life of the community that may not be on the agenda for that night, but may be on their mind. And I think, I request that you offer up a second open to the public early on in the meeting, so the people that have to get out of their homes at night and come here on a cold winter evening don't have to sit through a lot of things that they aren't concerned about to finally get to talk to you about the things that they think affect the traditional character and quality of life of their community. I think a really good way to do that would be to offer up a second open to the public. I think that would show the public that they're not last because you don't want to hear from them. If you want, you want to hear from them, of course, one of the first things is to let them say what they want to say, and then at the end of the meeting to sum up whatever might have come up during that time. And I'd like to request that you open the public up twice during meetings. What do you think of that idea?
Thanks for the request, Harlan.
What do you think of that idea?
Do you have anything else?
What do you think of that idea?
Well, think about it.
And, and let me...
Do you have anything else, Harlan?
And let me know when. This is not an unreasonable request, George. I'm not asking for anything subversive. I'm just asking you a simple question. Will you think about it? You said yes. When will you let me know what your decision is? That's all. I'm just asking a question, that's all.
We'll, we'll let you know. Thanks, Harlan.
Thanks, Harlan.
When, George?
We'll let you know, Harlan.
When, George?
Okay. Anybody else for open the public?
When, George? When?
If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
When, when, George?
All those in favor?
When?
Thank you.